Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council meeting. It is Thursday, September 29, 7:30. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father God, we again come here this evening to conduct the business of the residents of this great city. Please instill in us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the courage to do the right thing while representing all of our residents. Father God, we ask you to bless our city and our country as we struggle with many issues facing us each and every day. Some of these issues are simple to solve and others take enormous strength to persevere. But we know that you are with us throughout our struggles and we know that you will give us the strength that we need. Father, we ask that you protect our police and firemen as it seems that their jobs are becoming more difficult and enduring every day, especially in the large cities. Their jobs are not easy as they face many decisions each day, as they encounter those who desire to be combative, as they attempt to keep the public safe. Father God, we also ask you to bless our servicemen and women who also place their lives on the line each and every day to keep our country free as there are many countries and groups who would like nothing better than to destroy our freedoms. All of these things we ask in your most holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is approval of City Council meeting minutes dated September 15, 2016. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Nubielo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we can move on to the next item, which is an ordinance... I'm sorry. Demolition, yes. Okay, I was looking for Mr. Jordy. Is...we're going to move down to number 11, demolition for 819 Cherry Street. Good evening, Mr. Gray. How are you?
Yeah, I'm pinching for Joe.
Okay, good.
He had another commitment. Yes, this is a demolition of 819 Cherry Street. This is a...within the institutional zone, the properties that are required by Susquehannock Health as they are able to acquire those properties. So this is one of the standard demolitions that are coming in as part of their acquisition of properties as they are able to obtain them. There is a representative here also this evening, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this demolition?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Comments or questions from members of council? I hear none. Mrs. Frank on the demolition, please.
Mr. Nubielo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and demolition is approved. Thank you for coming out for the long meeting here. You're welcome to stay, of course, or not. Next item on the agenda, then, we'll return back up to number five, ordinance for general fund transfer. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance, transfer ordinance, be it hereby ordained by the City Council, the City of Williamsport, that the following regulations to the 2016 general fund budget be made as follows.
And if you could just read the totals, please.
The totals are $259,740 as far as the change, and then on page two, $259,740.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance in first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Mr. Pavlok, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you, Dr. Williamson. This ordinance is getting us cleaned up midway through the year. There have been a number of issues that have been addressed by council over the past few months, be it the Code's GIS software, the fire breathing compressor apparatus, along with a number of other things that have been indicated. The general fund transfer basically has four categories. There's transfers to cover overages in recreation, insurances, as I said, the Code's GIS software, and Police Academy cost. Of those four groups, we were able to find savings within those four groups to cover the related overages. One group may have taken and given a little more savings to help out another group, but in total, the four groups were able to solve the overages that we've seen at this point and expect for the remainder of the year. This was reviewed by Finance.
Thank you. And Mr. Allison from Finance.
Yes, Finance did review this. And we were...we were pleased that the Finance Department was able to accomplish all these moves. This is a comprehensive transfer ordinance that will still have a few things to clean up at the end of the year, but this basically takes care of any big items. We talked about the savings in insurance. That would be on the first page, Section 1, from Finance Insurance General Liability. And there was a big savings in that line item that enabled some transfers into other things that helped. We also talked about...let me get...not the new one, but the... Oh, a question I had for Mr. Pavlok that we hadn't asked was the Council Legislative Contingency Fund, the budget and then the transfer. Will this zero that account out?
No, there's still an amount remaining in that. As you see on that line, it takes the balance from $52,000 down to $40,000. So there's 40 remaining in there.
So that 40 is not expended?
There's been nothing allocated for that at this time.
Okay. And...I don't think we had any other detailed discussions on any of the other items because Mr. Pavlok did a good job of tying everything in together in each group. And it was...it made sense. It was logical. It was cohesive. And it gets accomplished everything that needs to be done. And we thank them for finding money that we committed to for the Fire Department, for the breathing apparatus, and backed us up on that gesture that we felt was necessary at that point because it hadn't been done and the Fire Department needed the compressor. So we figured, well, by gum, we'll give it to you. Joe, figure out how we're going to do that. So we're thankful for that.
And the recommendation?
We passed on the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith? Mrs. Katz?
I would just like to clarify, Joe, with the contingency, our contingency fund of $12,000, that was for the Parks Program, right? And you were waiting for the transfer, right, to pay the bills on that, right?
That is correct. Essentially, when we say we're grouping things together, there was a number of recreation transfers that were necessary. As you guys probably remember, during the budget process, there was discussion on a second park program. $20,000 or $12,000 was set aside in legislative contingency. So in order to balance everything out, we put that back into the budget, allocating it towards the second recreation program.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Smith.
The other day, Joe and I had discussed this, and I know there's been discussion about the recreation budget being over. And, you know, sometimes it's very hard to predict a budget for the next year. They use figures that are based on last year, and maybe you go back three years and average them out and try to come up with a number. And that's what they are, they're numbers. And sometimes things happen to create, as he pointed out, areas where the money isn't used where it should be, and sometimes there's overages. So I think that alleviates some of the issues that have been discussed about the recreation budget. I think that when the budget was put together last year, we did, and Justin at that time did his due diligence the best we could. But there's always those unknown things that creep up and you can't plan for. So I think based on what we're seeing here with this transfer, I think that Joe's done a good job in moving the money from different accounts to be able to cover ones that needed it where we had overages in some of the other ones. So thanks, Joe, for the time you put in working on that to try to get all those numbers to come out properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from members of council? Mr. Henderson.
Thank you. Just a question here on the first section. Moving down to the Finance line, Insurance General Liability, the change is $153,690. That's a big change. Can you just help me out with that?
Just to explain that one. As I said, there were savings in the insurance. The insurance includes our liability, building contents, and the workers' comp. What happened this year when our carrier bid out the policies, they had a grouped policy where in the past we were able to break it out amongst general liability and building and contents. Because we weren't sure what the allocation is and rather just setting a number aside to it, we put all the money into the building and contents account. So you'll see the big transfer coming out in Part 1, but you'll also see the number going in in Part 2. So essentially, it moves all of our insurance policies' costs, other than workers' comp and health insurance, into the building and contents account.
So then, when we look at this budget coming up here for next year, would you recommend that...I mean, that would be something we'd reflect instead of the 215 that we budgeted last year, we budget a much smaller amount there and then a larger amount the other way? Or is this just kind of...
I think if we're going to continue on the way we're going, I know we're looking to put RFPs out in the near future, but we can continue to budget separately for the two categories. And if they come and build separately, we can allocate them out. Or we can build one just building contents and liability insurance account and just fill that with the entire amount that we expect for premiums for the year. We can look at it either way. We'll have to gauge where we're headed as we get through the process and as we go through the budget process, and we'll determine at that point which direction we feel is the best approach.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I just have a couple smaller ones. You mentioned the RFP for insurance. Do you have a timeframe for when the RFP itself will be ready to send out?
I'll defer to Mr. Nichols on that one.
A rough one. It doesn't have to be exact.
In the near future?
Okay.
No.
Here...
We have a draft RFP, and we're going to have a conference call with Jill Nagy beginning next week. We'd like to get it out by next week. That's our goal.
When you do send it out to potential bidders, can you send us a copy of the RFP just so we can, you know, understand it from the very beginning? And then, of course, we'll be better prepared when the administration comes to us with the suggestions. Okay, thank you. The other question is really building off something that Mr. Smith said. You know, the Rec Department seems to be the area that has had the most difficulty in kind of locking in budgeting from a year-to-year basis. Some of that, I think, may be the nature of the beast. Some of it is because we've been changing programming, the pool situation, et cetera, all of those things. And so I think we've talked about expecting that. One of the things I think that council looks forward to from our new Rec Director, Jessie Novinger, is it appears that she has a strong background in budgeting and the ability to do kind of long-term planning for programming. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to get a little bit tighter control over the Recreation Administration Budget, Recreation Programming Budget, the various pool budgets, so that, you know, one, the less transfers are possible, necessary in the future, but also so we have better planning in place. If she can propose, say, at the end of the year, that next year, these recreation programs and these special event programs are going to be the package of programs that we offer in the coming year, then we know the costs. We can say, yes, we can afford it; no, we can't afford it. And you would need to supplement X amount to be able to do that much through fundraising. Then she's got kind of an annual check and set of, as it were, marching orders for the coming years and can know that she can rely on those kinds of things as things proceed. So I look forward to seeing the impact of her experience in those regard. With that, I guess I should say, you know, it's been the position of council in the past in terms of departmental income not being necessarily part of the revenue available for the department for expenses above and beyond their budget. And I think that's an important part of how budgeting should work because, you know, it's natural that some expenses in some departments are going to exceed expectations or what that department's revenue is going to bring in. I think the one exception in my mind, and I'm recognizing that this...I'm comfortable with this particular thing, although we have to make sure that we keep tight rein on it, is in that area of special events, right? If we have an annual plan for recreation and special event budgeting and we say we're going to allocate this amount of money of the taxpayers' money towards these kinds of programs, but we want to do more and we bring in additional revenue that helps us pay for doing more within the course of the year, I think we have that conversation. We don't skip having the conversation, but it makes sense. And so I'm comfortable with this recognition that program income is higher and that that has helped to support additional special events over the course of the year. The key is that it's transparent and the planning occurs so that we all know that there's a citywide endorsement of... through its representatives, an endorsement of these are the kinds of special events that the city and its taxpayers should participate in and not just the best idea I came up with this morning in the shower and suddenly that becomes a funded event. And so good planning and good budgeting, even if we're able to allocate a little extra money because a program really worked well, is a path we should try to stay on. There was one other comment, but I think I'll just skip it. So thank you very much, Mr. Allison.
If I could just follow up on that similar point. We did have somewhat of a discussion about the Rec Department, kind of a sidebar off the financials. And the fact of the matter is, we brought the program back in-house a few years ago. So it had to be built from scratch, and that's not an easy thing to do. And we hired a brand-new recreation director and put a lot on his plate. So, you know, we understood there were going to be ups and downs, and it's a learning curve for everybody. And so Justin, you know, put in a lot of hours on a lot of different things, and so did a lot of other people on the Recreation Commission and other volunteers. That worked. But as you're saying, it seems like now we are transitioning to another stage in the recreation program and with an experienced director and that brings different skills to the table. And they're going to be useful in doing exactly what you were outlining there, defining things, delegating things, planning in all of those areas. Now that the foundation's there, it's ready to be built upon. It was ready. It would have been ready regardless, but now there's a transition, and I think we're going to see that going forward. So we talked some about that.
Mr. Nubielo.
I would just add to that since we're speaking about Mr. Simpson, unfortunately in his absence at this point. When he came on board, he was, as we all knew, kind of fresh out of the box, and we understood that. He also spent a fair amount of time initially recouping some losses from previous times, at the same time trying to get a fresh start. A little difficult to get a fresh start on something...I'm sorry. Easier to get a fresh start on something if you have all the resources available to you at the start. I don't think he had that luxury at that particular time. He was recouping some losses and some, in my estimation, some bad decisions that had been made long before he got here. And I would assume that he had to put an awful lot of time and effort into that before he could really start his fresh approach to things. And I think maybe at that particular instance, it was maybe just a bit more than he could bear without much in the way of assistance at that time as well. So giving him, I think, the just respect that he's due. I think now we are, in fact, on a new path. And it's a path that I think is going to lead into a stronger position for the Rec Department. And I think we now see some stronger support, not only from this body, but from the administration as well. And I think that's going to be an advantage in the long run here. So I thank everybody involved for taking the step forward.
One last thing I'd like to point out for me about some of the transfers. There's a lot of money going into various lines that we've been talking about with recreation and pools, et cetera. Council should be clear in saying some of those were absolutely part of that planning process. In other words, there were some decisions, as Mrs. Katz pointed out earlier at the end of last...during budget season, that we wanted to work on planning to add a second park into the recreation program. And we set aside money, not in their budget, but in the council's contingency budget so that this very transfer could occur. And that was a deliberate decision, and I think it worked well. We were also involved in decisions that are resulting in the transfers into salary and benefits listed in this budget as well. And so I wouldn't want anyone to be confused that those aspects of what we're talking here were unexpected results of overspending. Those were part of the planning process. Some of the smaller matters, right, are what we're really talking about tonight in terms of hoping to get a good planning for our next phase, even get a better sense of where planning should go and where budgeting should go on those line items. But I wanted to clarify that for a second.
And one other thing on another subject that we did talk about, not related to these transfers, but we asked a question about the refund or rebate, whatever you want to call it, on our health insurance. And we have half of that come in. The other half...
We received three-quarters of the amount that we expect to receive. The other quarter will come in once they close out all our stop-loss claims, which we expect to be here in the coming future.
Okay.
Mr. Henderson.
Yeah, while we're talking numbers, I've been comparing 2015 actual income for this department. There's two line items. There's the recreation program income, and then there's special events. So there's two different line items from the same department for this income. When you factor in the changes that we're making now from the actual income to what we are proposing now with this and what we're moving now, there's a change in about $22,000. And I'm just wondering what we're attributing that to. You may or may not know this, but what did we do differently in our Rec Department that brought in so much more this year?
The Rec Department income that is indicated on this transfer in Part 1 is related to pavilion deposits along with the revenue brought in from the park programs. So last year, we only had one program. I think we budgeted it at one program. So when you add the second program in there, and then...I can't speak to attendance at the programs, but I'm assuming that that was up also or the fees were raised this year. I can't speak as to the actions the Rec Department, Recreation Commission took related to those fees.
But this $14,000 would be pretty much just pavilions and parks program?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Last month, when we had our Public Safety and Public Works meeting, I had asked the department heads to bring their budget numbers to the October meeting. At that point, Police Department, Fire Department, Streets and Parks, and Code's Department said they had those figures put together. So just as a reminder, we have Public Safety on Tuesday, and should there be an agenda also for Public Works, if you would please bring those budget numbers so that we can start looking at those numbers and seeing where we're going to be placing them in the budget. And if we don't have a Public Works meeting on Tuesday, then the next meeting, if you bring those, and then what we will do is look at those and then pass them on to the Finance Department so that we can get an early start rather than waiting until November to try to start these numbers. I think now, and they have assured me that they've been working on this, so this is good, that they've got a start on it of what they're going to be looking at for next year. So when we get those numbers, we'll look at them, go over them, and then we'll pass them all on to the Finance Committee for their looking at early numbers so that we can begin to see where we're going compared to last year and 2014. So, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in first reading.
Mr. Nubielo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that ordinance is approved in first reading. Second...next item on the agenda is an ordinance related to Act 13 fund transfer. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this in first reading?
So moved.
Second.
I guess I should have Mrs. Frank read it before I ask for that.
An ordinance, transfer ordinance. Should I do that?
Just the totals, please.
The total change is $86,000 in Section 1 from Section 2, $86,000.
Thank you. And do those motions and seconds still stand? Yes, I hear a yes and a yes. Mr. Pavlok, how are...back again.
This Act 13 transfer solves two issues. This was the breathing air compressor that we spoke of earlier along with an amount that was... an amount of Act 13 funds that was less than what we anticipated when we put the budget together last December. In order to accommodate those two items, we've made a reduction to three separate accounts. Making those reductions has no impact on any contracts or anything that's been approved by council to this point. So with that, this was reviewed again by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Allison.
Yes, we did review this in Finance.
Yes, we did review this in Finance and as Mr. Pavlock has said, this is a pretty simple one. The street resurfacing rehab money, taking out of that budget $50,000, which we had not committed to any specific projects. Money saved on the police vehicle purchase and then money that we had initially set aside for Graffiti Run flood mitigation, which was our attempt to begin to build up a small capital fund, savings fund for that. However, we understand long-range to really get that problem solved is going to take a lot bigger chunk of money, but, you know, we felt it was a responsible thing to do to begin to put some savings there. So, at this point, we have to balance the budget and this is a good way to do it. And this will be the end of the Act 13 money. We can't dip into that pot anymore. So, we pass it to full-body counsel with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith.
So, on the police vehicle purchase, initial budget was 45, it's now 25. So, we're budgeting one car to be purchased this year?
No, everything that's been authorized by council has been purchased. This is the balance after the purchases.
That was what was left over after the purchases?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the Graffiti Run flood mitigation, initial budget was 45 and it's 29. Okay, are we going to be able to carry any of that money over to next year?
As we did last year, we'll do that again this year.
Pardon me?
As we did last year. Last year, council set money aside for Graffiti Run. Anything that's remaining in there will carry over in that classification.
Okay. Because that is a concern, that we are trying to build up that amount of money.
We treat this Act 13 as a multi-year budget, so we'll continue that on.
Okay, and we took $50,000 out of the street resurfacing program, correct?
Yeah, there's no effect to the Ravine Road project or the 2016 street resurfacing program.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just confirming, I think, Mr. Henderson is looking it up for us real quick. I believe there's all, was, to help clarify Mr. Smith's question, there were also general fund dollars allocated to police vehicle purchases. So, it's not as big a change as it looks once you take that into account. Did you happen to find it?
I didn't. I was looking at the Act 13 there.
Okay, that's fine, just in case you happened to. And so, that, as I'm sure you recall, you know, helps to make sure that the change isn't as large as it might seem when you're almost cutting it in half out of this budget. There was additional funds from other budgets. Other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on this ordinance in first reading, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that's ordinance carries in first reading. Next item on the agenda is resolution designating the Chief Administrative Officer for the pension plans. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution designating the Chief Administrative Officer of the Officers and Employees Police and Fire Pension Plans, whereas the City Council of the City of Williamsport have previously adopted Officers and Employees Police and Fire Pension Plans for the city employees and whereas the City Council desires to designate the Budget and Fiscal Officer as the Chief Administrative Officer of the Officers and Employees Police and Fire Pension Plans. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that the Budget and Fiscal Officer is designated as the Chief Administrative Officer of the Officers and Employees Police and Fire Pension Plans.
Thank you. Could I have a motion a second on the resolution, please?
They'll move.
Second.
Hearing motion and second, Mr. Pavlock.
The next two resolutions were brought up this year, this past month, when the state came in to do their biennial audit of the city's pension funds. With the implementation of Act 44, which amends Act 205, there are a couple items that we need to memorialize through resolutions. The resolutions that I presented to you, naming the Chief Administrative Officer and to implement procedures, adopting written procedures on how professional services are chosen, are standard language within Act 44 and presented to me directly from the auditors from the state coming in for review. Their recommendation for the Chief Administrative Officer is to name a position, that way if you have transitions of employees coming in and out, you still have a person or a position designated versus an individual. So, it creates the continuity. And then it also gives them the ability to know who they need to make contact with the state when they come in for their review, so they're not assuming that they should be talking to Person X when in fact they should be talking to Person Y. So, it formally memorializes the Budget and Fiscal Officer as the Chief Administrative Officer for the city's pension plans.
Thank you. Was this reviewed by Finance?
We did review this and as Mr. Pavlock has indicated, the state auditors recommended this, they adopted it. And it just so happens also that in practice, right now, Mr. Pavlock is the one that does handle all these questions and duties. So, it just puts it in writing, you know, memorializes it and finalizes it that, as he said, the position of Budget and Finance Officer, Fiscal Officer, is the place to go. So, it just makes sense. It's an easier way to deal with things and it's also a big promotion for Mr. Pavlock, so we're going to have to take that into account.
I assured Mr. Allison that there was no additional responsibility by putting this in place.
Yeah, he did. We did ask him if there was anything in here that he wasn't already doing, and there isn't. He's already doing everything that's outlined there, so.
Mrs. Katz.
We just want to congratulate him. He gets three more initials after his name now.
It's a resume builder.
Yes, it is.
Any other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda is a resolution adopting written procedures related to the pensions. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution of the City of Williamsport, Lake Hennings County, Pennsylvania, adopting written procedures in how professional services are chosen for its pension plans in order to comply with Act 44 of 2009 and the Auditor General's recommendation.
That'll be fine. I was going to say short form and then I realized, well, the title didn't even qualify as short form. Can I have a motion a second on the resolution?
They'll move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlock.
This resolution puts in place written procedures on how the city will choose professional services, be it an actuary, auditor, any legal services, investment services related to the city's pension plans. It's a procedure that the city follows in other areas. I know RVT uses a very similar method to this and encourages opportunities for everyone to participate in the selection process.
You comment, Finance?
Yes, we...
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just going to add one more thing.
Oh, sure.
And that is, this doesn't mean we're changing anything, it's just a requirement of Act 44 that if the city desires to look at changing its actuary or its investment advisor, then we've established a procurement process required by the state that we will follow that process. That's all, it's just as a formality.
Thank you very much. Ms. Allison.
And we did review this in Finance and I think everything's been covered that we talked about, so we pass it on to the body, full-body counsel with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution carries. Next item is a resolution for agreement with Campbell, Durant, Viti, Paula, Mebo, Miller, et al., et cetera, and forever and always. Mrs. Frank, please.
Agreement with Campbell, Durant, Viti, Paul Limbo, and Miller, PC, for the Labor and Employment Legal Services for the City of Williamsport. Short form.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Your motion a second on the resolution, please.
They'll move.
Second.
Mr. Nichols.
Thank you and good evening, members of council.
How are you this evening, by the way?
I'm fine. Mr. Pavlock failed to say that those were standard resolution. I think that would have clarified a lot of, but anyway, this resolution is to prove an engagement letter and agreement for the services of Campbell, Durant, et al., for specialized labor and employment matters. The reason for this proposed action is that our current contract is with, for these services, with Ballard Spa, but on September 1st, Pat Harvey, the attorney that primarily represents us in these matters and other associates, left Ballard Spa and joined the firm of Campbell, Durant, and, which actually was a firm we used to have a relationship with many years ago. So, by entering into this new agreement, we'll retain the services of Pat Harvey, so that's important because it'll establish the continuity that we need for these services because they do an excellent job. And it's also important because of a potential Act 111 arbitration related to the Police Department. So, the reason they switched firms is the firm they were with is sort of moving away from municipal services and that's not really a primary activity that they pursue. And by moving over to Campbell, Durant, Pat Harvey will be able to maintain the costs which we have in our budget. The other firm is more specialized and was going to increase our costs, so this is a win-win situation for everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Allison.
Finance reviewed this. I believe that the fourth person's name is Palumbo, picked up an I somewhere, but if anybody cares. But we did talk about how satisfied we'd been with Pat Harvey, his relationship with us. He knows the city, he knows the dynamics of the legal issues that we face with personnel and other areas that are related to that, so we felt it was important to keep that relationship going at another firm that is specializing in this. And it's, all the rates are the same, nothing's going up, so essentially, just the firm changes, but we have the same relationship and the same resources, so it seemed like a wise thing to do. So, we pass it to full-body counsel with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? Thank you. Mrs. Frank, he didn't term this a standard resolution, so could you call the roll on this deluxe resolution, please?
Okay. Roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Noviello.
A special yes.
Special yes. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the deluxe resolution here is passed. Next item on the agenda then is a resolution authorizing City of Williamsport to award a contract of some type. I have to give Mrs. Frank a chance to have something new to read for us. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing the City of Williamsport to award a contract for the purchase of a Bobcat Skid steer loader. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that it awards the contract for the purchase of a Bobcat steer, skid steer loader to best line equipment, 25 Legion Road, Muncie, Pennsylvania, in the total amount of $34,866.52.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion a second on this resolution, please?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second.
Thank you again.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
I was expecting Mr. Sello, Mr. Wright, somebody.
No, I know. You've got slim pickings in there. Well, anyway, this resolution is to authorize RVT to purchase this piece of equipment as part of our downtown facility maintenance effort. And this relates to our parking garages, the Trade and Transit Center hub, various other, Williamsport Parking Authority lots, sidewalks and other maintenance activities related to snow removal throughout the downtown. With the number of facilities that we now have, and also this includes our contract management relationship with the Parking Authority, it's far more beneficial to own this piece of equipment than leasing it, which we do each year. The purchase is being funded by a state grant, which was attached to your information, and this will be very helpful because it will eliminate the operating costs related to leasing this piece of equipment. And we also use the state contract pricing and all of this was reviewed by Public Works and the Finance Committee earlier this week.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith from Public Works, please.
This was brought to us on Tuesday of this week and as Mr. Nichols said, this piece of equipment is going to be used quite extensively in several different areas since we've got another Trade and Transit Center. And this is very much like the piece of equipment that was brought to us to purchase a couple of years ago for the Streets and Parks Department. And it was pointed out that, at that time, that they were renting this device and the cost to rent it, after a couple of years, exceeded the cost of purchasing it. So, we applaud the efforts, Mr. Nichols, to look at this from a purchase standpoint of view and with the accessories that are going to be on it, they've added an accessory of an angle broom, a low-profile bucket, and also a snow blade, so it can be used for many different things. And he said that he especially wanted the broom because of the fact is the corn broom that they've been using for 30 years is totally worn out. So, he really wanted one for a machine that could be able to do the sweeping and this can also be used on sidewalks because of the size of it. So, again, another piece of equipment that instead of renting it, we're buying it and going to get more life out of that at less cost. And the one that we purchased, as I said a couple of years ago for Streets and Parks, has worked out real well, right, Mr. Sello?
I hear Tommy wants to know if he can come over and play with this one.
We did add a Raiders logo on the, just to please Mr. Sello.
Well, we passed the purchase of this item with a positive recommendation to full counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Allison from Finance.
Not much to add to that other than Mr. Nichols is probably going to be driving this a lot.
Can't wait.
Yeah. He intends to branch out a little bit. And we tried to negotiate having city council members parking places outside of their homes clear and maybe sidewalks if they could, but he's holding hard on that. We're not going to get it, so we pass it to full-body counsel with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of council? We're in a jolly mood this evening. Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. I believe that brings us...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go Eagles.
Go Eagles and Steelers and Cougars. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for Harb. We have one item this evening for SMC Realty on 929 West Fourth Street that involves replacing roofing, downspouts, and electrical panels and air conditioning covers and vents. Can I have a motion a second to approve this certificate?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next item is except for filing. We have city committee on historic preservations for July 19th, 2016, ERC committee meeting minutes of July 5th, 2016, public safety minutes of July 5th, 2016, public works minutes of July 5th, 2016, finance committee meetings, minutes of July 19th, and recreation commission meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2016. Can I have a motion and a second to approve those for filing?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are approved for filing. Next item are announcements. I need to announce that city council... I need to announce that City Council had an executive session on September 22nd for a matter of personnel. Council will also be having a meeting, an executive session this evening immediately following the pension, police pension board meeting that immediately follows the regularly scheduled city council meeting on a matter of personnel. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, October 13th, at 7:30 in City Hall Council Chambers. As I mentioned, there'll be a police pension board meeting immediately following this meeting. Other upcoming meetings include on Monday, October 3rd at noon is the Planning Commission, Tuesday, October 4th at noon is Public Safety Committee, Monday, October 10th at 4:00 PM is Recreation Commission, Tuesday, October 11th at noon is Public Works, and at 3:30 is the Finance Committee. Wednesday, October 12th, at 3:30 is the ONE Pension Board Meeting. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have comments or questions from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
I would like to express our sympathies to Councilman Don Nubielo on the passing of his mother, and also to Councilwoman Whaley on the passing of her husband this week.
I'm pausing here for a moment of reflection. Other comments from members of council? Mr. Mayor, comments from you or your administration? Thank you. Comments from the general public? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
They'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.